Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome, members of the audience. Thank you for coming to the pre-primary Burian City Council Candidates Forum. Uh, thank you also, candidates, for coming. Uh, we so much look forward to hearing your opinions and views. Uh, we did invite all the candidates running, so we're very happy that you could make it. This warm welcome is coming to you from all the co-sponsors of this event, and those include the P Town Blog, uh, Community Visions, the Resident Action Partner, uh, sorry, Resident Action Project, Transit Riders Union, the Washington Low-Income Housing Alliance. So we're welcoming co-sponsors, volunteers who are here tonight. My name is Irene Dashish. Uh, I'm a member of the Facilitator Circle of Community Visions in Burian, and I'm a volunteer at the event tonight. And so before we get started, uh, I'd like to acknowledge that this gathering place rests on the sacred lands of the Salish Coast peoples, including the Duamish people. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish tribe, to whom we owe an immeasurable debt. I'd like now to turn over the mic to Don Bird from Transform Burian, an organization that reaches out to our homeless neighbors. Don and his wife are co-recipients of this year's Burian Citizen of the Year Award, together with Roxana Pardo Garcia, our moderator. So, Don is the emcee for the evening, Roxana moderator. Thank you so much, everyone.
I'd like to share with you how this is gonna go tonight. The questions that you've turned in are gonna be sorted into seven baskets. Six of those are on the topics of public safety, affordable housing, business and economic development, homelessness, youth issues, the environment, and the seventh one will be miscellaneous. When it's time for a new question, I will draw a card out from the next basket and hold you with the audience and hand it to the moderator. The moderator will read out the question itself. Any statements made before the actual question or after it will be read out. The questions must be answerable and relevant to all candidates. After reading out the question and it pertains only to one or two candidates, a new question will be going through the basket. While volunteers are in the process of sorting your submitted questions, you will be given prepared questions to the candidates so that we can start immediately. Candidates, you will have one minute exactly to answer each question. The timekeeper will hold up a green card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time is complete. If you do not complete your answer at that time, the timekeeper will ask you to stop. Each of you will have one minute at the end of all the questions to make closing remarks. And I'd like to introduce Roxana Pardo Garcia, Pino de Puerto. She is the moderator.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Buenas noches. You know, Roxana Pardo Garcia, the co-moderator of Alimentando el Pueblo. Um, thank you also much for being here tonight, and we're gonna go ahead and get started. So your first question is, what policies will you support? And what action will you take to increase the housing supply in Burian, specifically affordable housing?
Let's start over here, Mrs. Dashish.
Okay, so the question, as I understand it, is addressing the concerns about affordable housing in Burian. We, uh, that was one, that was the second most important concern according to the 2018 Burian Assessment Survey, uh, with safety being number one. The city passed an ordinance, they took their quick action, and they came up with an ordinance called Ordinance 718 to directly, uh, address this, to try to find out why developers are not building affordable housing in Burian. And the question is, is it valid on, why are they not building affordable housing in Burian? So the 718 set out to put five demonstration projects out there to, to ask the developers to go ahead and build and then feed back to Burian.
Fine, fine, that's it.
Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Crystal Marks, the founder of She and Her. Uh, so in order to increase affordable housing in Burian, I think we need to do more things like the Affordable Housing Demonstration Program that, uh, my smart friend here was just alluding to. Uh, we need to make sure that we are offering creative ways for developers to come into our city, but we also need to have ways to hold them accountable, to making sure that the buildings that they are bringing here are not pushing, uh, gentrification, are pushing existing communities out of our city into surrounding communities where it might be cheaper for them to then live. So to do that, I think it's a community-involved process. We are starting the Anvil and Boulevard Park kind of reimagining process right now. So we need to be talking to communities who live there currently. What are you needing here? Making sure we're not putting things there that aren't needed and that would drive up the cost of housing in the area. But also making sure that we're working with affordable housing developers so that we can show them that we are ready to accept affordable housing in Burian at all levels, whether it's for folks who are overly cost-burdened or folks who are just struggling a little bit.
Yes, about affordable housing, uh, what I have seen so far hasn't met my expectations. Uh, I tried to buy a land, not to run it on an app, and I wanted to do something on the bottom, and then rental units, affordable rental units on top. But they told me I could only do for seniors. And I don't have anything against seniors, but doing it only for seniors to make the building, I had to put more investment into it. So I decided not to buy the land because it wasn't, I didn't have the money to invest in. I'm a small company, I have my small business, and I wanted to be able to build something. So we need to be more encouraged to build that, you know? If I can build for anyone, you know, regular families, not a specific, uh, demographic people. I know there's families that they cannot find a place to live and they have children. I wanna be able to be there for them as well. Thank you.
Again, is there more from She and Her, or they found? And then so much of Burian's own is single-family housing, and, um, with the need for over 3,000 new units of housing to, uh, to achieve affordable housing for Burian, we need to think creatively. We need to look at some of those, uh, single-family units and turn them into duplexes or fourplexes or sixplexes, make some zone changes, some accessory dwelling units. Um, those are ways to have more of a long-term affordable housing. And, um, as you start to have more people in there, that means looking at neighborhoods and saying, is this neighborhood able to sustain those people? Are there sidewalks? Is there, um, are the utilities up to the number of people? Is there broadband? Is there sewer? Is there water? Is there power? So, um, making affordable housing means upgrading our cities so that neighborhoods can sustain themselves. It also means bringing goods and services.
There we go. Well, let's start with the evening. Uh, my name is Jimmy Maka, and I'm running for City Council Position Number Three. You know, this housing dilemma is a big issue. It's not just an issue here in Burian, but it's a worldwide, nationwide issue. So here's the thing, is when we say affordable housing, you know, I want affordable housing for my child, who just finished high school, who's gonna go to college. I want affordable housing for my son, who's 24 years old, who puts his tools on every day to go to work. I want affordable housing for our retirees. I want affordable housing for people that suffer from mental health. So the question here is, this is a very important issue, is what have we done in the last 40 years? I can tell you us being elected, we've made sure that we've expanded PDU units. We've made sure that we have a Mary's Place in our community to help those unhoused people that find themselves on the streets. Uh, we've passed the DESC here in the city of Burian, and making sure that we're educating ourselves, coming together. We may not agree that what, what building should we build, but we need to, uh, find out.
I'm Charles Schaefer, HDM program, I'm running for Position Three. Uh, I also support the Affordable Housing Demonstration Project. If I would like to know, propose making that permanent, because I think the great thing about it is it allows nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity and DESC that have expertise in providing housing to come to the city and do what they do best. The city is not, uh, the city does not have housing expertise and shouldn't be in the housing business. Additionally, I also do support zoning changes. I think we need higher density. Uh, I think we need varying types of housing, uh, duplexes, fourplexes, maybe tiny homes, uh, just whatever. I think we need to be really innovative with the types of housing we're providing, but just not one type of housing that's gonna be everyone's needs.
Hello, my name is Hugo Garcia, Burian City Council, City Number One, HDM program. And I've served for on the Planning Commission for the last three-plus years, and I've done a lot of work currently that made recommendations to the existing council. We have a goal of, uh, building 144 units a year of housing just to meet our, our goals as, as a city within King County. We push to have more of that family, uh, housing done. Uh, someone who actually lives in a duplex 15 years ago, couldn't afford to live here unless my brother and I, who's an educator, bought a place together. That was the only way, and I still live with him in that same duplex. We needed more of that type of housing. And we started to do that on the King County Planning Commission and made recommendations to do so. Also, we expanded to two ADU units. And we also need to make sure that we protect existing affordable housing, but making sure that tenant rights are strong, to make sure that not folks are not displaced. Also, I wanna make sure that we're a leading city when it comes to MFPE credits for housing.
All right. Thank you all so much for your answers. We're gonna go ahead and move on to public safety. As a reminder, I will only be reading the question itself. No statement made before the actual question or after it will be read aloud. In concrete terms, what is your plan to deal with gang activity, guns, and homelessness in Burian? You're actually gonna start with Crystal this time, so as we move on with the questions, we'll start with the next person.
Sure, that's a good question. So, uh, what we are currently doing right now is working with, um, a gun safety initiative that works throughout, uh, the region. So not just Burian, but what is South King County doing? This addresses gun violence as well as gang violence, because if you're not addressing the root causes of what's leading to crimes involving guns, it's leading to gang-involved crimes, then what you're doing is just repeating a cycle of arrest, offend, arrest, offend, and it's breaking apart our families. It is in our school pipelines when folks are entering schools and then they are finding themselves engaged in gang activity before then being, uh, uh, ripped into the prison system instead of being engaged with. So, uh, what my proposal is, and what I'm working with our chief on, is working on addressing those root causes. The lead program was a good start, but now we're talking about gang and gun violence. It means what are families needing that they are not getting through us as a city? The partnership with the school district, and how can we work together as a region to address these needs, because it does not stop at our city borders. This extends to other cities as well.
Yes, about this, uh, the gangs. The gangs is something that usually the kids start from being in school, because they, they trying to find a place to begin. And if we can have some more after-school activities for the kids to be engaged in a positive way, instead of being home alone and they can get and find the wrong type of people, which later on will lead them into crime and later on will lead them into homelessness. You know, we can start at the root of the problem, start in the school with education. Now, for the homeless that are right now here in the city, we can do an outreach and find out how they became homeless and try to get family reunification so they can get the support they need in the family, as well as mental and whatever treatment they need to get off the street. That's my solution for crime. Thank you.
I'd like to say that I, I see those, particularly I see homelessness as such a different public safety issue that I'm hoping we can talk about it when we discuss homelessness. Um, in terms of the guns and gangs, I think it's very important that there be something, a future that youth can have that is real and available to them. A job, um, the possibility of education to get that job in whether that be through an apprenticeship program or a pre-apprenticeship program that engages them when they're starting to decide what is my life track. Um, I also really wanna underscore what George Young said, that after-school programs start very young and engaging students and helping students find out what they love and what is exciting to them, but also keeping them in groups of people that are going to be uplifting to them with adult mentors that, um, they can look up to, people who have similar life experiences and can be peer mentors.
Imagine, imagine this, you're a mom and dad, and you get a call that your 13-year-old child has been murdered. So it's not what I plan on doing, is what I'm doing today. That's going to the neighborhoods. Uh, you know, I have the ability to speak two languages. And it's Latinos, we got Latinos down in the streets, and so I'm able to speak Spanish. But I thought I'd tell you this, uh, there is something for poverty than career criminals. And I think career criminals will need to go out there. My father died in a drug overdose, and I want the individual that sold those drugs to my father to either get some help, or leave with services in the city, but we're also not gonna allow ourselves to be taken advantage by these career criminals. There is no reason why we should have lost a 13-year-old child, and it needs the property. Some of these families are working two, three jobs. And that's why I believe in not only my speaking and I'm doing it. My company is a union cemetery company, I'm a small business, I offer healthcare.
All right, so I think the important thing is to reach out to these youth that are considering joining gangs on the fence and get to them before they start in that cycle, because it's, like Crystal said, I think it's just the arrest cycle. And, um, you know, I support programs for youth. I was on the Youth Council many years ago. So, uh, and the Parks Department, I think, does a pretty good job, but we can almost have more. Additionally, just our public spaces are not very youth-friendly. I mean, there's a few exceptions, like there's a skate park. But beyond that, uh, our community, like parks and origins involve our children and our families. I think just even having spaces where youth can go and just do other things would be a good start. And I think we really need to be intentional about our city and how it's designed, designed to have opportunities for youth.
Thank you. Uh, the city's gonna spend 13, over $13 million on police as a budget, but we're only gonna spend less than $3.7 million for parks, recreation, and cultural services. That's at the root cause. I wanna make sure that we put money where our mouth is and we bring back recreational activities for youth, and at the same time also provide a, an entrepreneurship program so that youth can start learning about running small businesses. We are a small business city, and we wanna make sure that we invest in our youth, and invest in programs like Choose 180 here in Burian, does a lot of outreach to kids. Invest in, uh, Pino de Puerto. These organizations are the ones that are connecting with our youth, with our middle schoolers, with our early high schoolers, and even sixth and fifth graders, because that's the age group that's, that's starting to get recruited. We have to invest in our parks. We have over 350,000, 350 acres of parks. And we, like we said, they're not, they're not being invested. I think we invest in our youth to actually plan and develop and invest in those parks.
Okay, uh, everyone in this room is paying for safety through and in our local agreement with the King County to outsource our police department. I have the contract right here. I've sat with the city police chief twice, Ted Bowe, and he is fighting to try to provide safety. And on the screen in that police officer's car is 15 service calls all the time. It's a meat grinder, it's tough. There are about $3 million away from being able to provide 5-minute time limit on service calls. So it's very unsafe, even more unsafe than you might realize. So how are we gonna do that? We've gotta generate more revenue. We've gotta figure out a way to generate more revenue. Without the revenue, all these dreams of what we're gonna do with parks or anything else isn't gonna happen. And then, uh, like Mr. Schaefer's saying, I agree with you completely. We've gotta take this contract and work on it.
Thank you all so much for your answers. We are going to move on to the environment. All right. How will we plan to improve public transportation for Burian residents?
That's one of my favorite ones, because that's one that I've been fighting for. Public transportation, I live in this area, you know, for Burian, and we lack of transportation. We need more buses, but so far it hasn't really been a need, that's what they say, and they have not put another route, you know? If we wanna have more housing in this area, we also need to have more buses. There's people that have to take like three buses in order to get to their house, because there's not one bus that will run like 128 or 136. Uh, we need that, we need to improve that. We need to, to talk to the city and work with the, uh, with transportation to try to get more bus route into this area of the city as well, not only to the downtown area, because this area is, is growing up fast, and we are expecting to have more houses, more, uh, people living in this area. We do need more transportation, and I'm going for it.
Thank you. I think that Burian has a lot of, uh, north-south transportation and not that much going east-west, and it causes a lot of trouble. If you wanna get from one side of Burian to the other using public transportation, you have to go through the downtown center. So I would really look at what are a couple of good corridors that go from as far west as we can go to as hardly severely as we can and that intersect with some of those north-south routes. The other thing, just highly personal, is the 121, 122, 123, uh, express routes that went to downtown Seattle were really heavily used by commuters. And I'm pretty sure, that was higher, but I'm sure there are other routes, equally important express routes. One of the best incentives to get people on buses is to make them timely and fast and efficient. And we need more of those in order to demonstrate that people want to use public transportation. So it becomes a, a first for their home.
I can tell you that, uh, met with our elderly and our community and senior care, maybe. It's sad that here, you know, uh, Mayor, we feel like we're in the jail here. We can't go to the doctor, we can't go to the farmer's market. So we need to do a little better job at, you know, we create a nonprofit with business, uh, we create, uh, or we look for federal funding, but we need to be able to have transportation within our city. Number one, it's gonna help our restaurants, it's gonna get our seniors out of their home. I mean, I know that I'm not getting any younger, I'm aging rapidly, but some of these individuals have old families. They have the reliance, reliance that take them to the grocery store, take them to the doctors, to go to church. Um, so we really need to step up and figure out what we can do with our local transportation and making sure the city provides transportations for our elderly and for those individuals that have disabilities and handicaps. Uh, there's something the audience said has not let me forget for the last 40 years, on making sure that we get more transportation for our elderly, so thank you.
So, uh, I'll share a personal story. Uh, when I was volunteering right here at our severe weather shelter, uh, and I, there are homeless people, you know, out, it's like 25-degree weather. I'm dragged into the shelter, and I'm telling them, hey, you can take the bus, but even, uh, just on First Avenue, 131, right up there, which is like a major corridor, you know, does not have reliable transit, you have to wait half an hour. Uh, so that's the thing, I think we need to focus on our high-density commercial, our multifamily residential transit corridors, and give reliable service on those first. I also agree with Sarah though on bringing back the express routes, I think. Uh, understandably, they, uh, they took those away during the pandemic, but I think, uh, that people are starting to commute back to work. Even just working with Metro, maybe bring them back at a reduced level initially to see what the demand is, and then we can return to full service, if that's just right.
We don't really have a budget for public transit, so we really have to collaborate and push our county and state leaders to improve and lower the cost of public transit if we need it. Uh, we definitely are doing good with the transit center, but, uh, uh, it's a must that the city start planning now for an extension of the light rail. We have to start planning now, because it's gonna take 20 to 30 years to get that, and it's something that's critical to the city's growth. Uh, we're already laying the foundation with our zoning and land use. I've done that on the Planning Commission to make sure that our transit, our development for housing is transit-oriented. But I wanna make sure that not only, uh, the transit improves, that people are not displaced with the current transit improvements that we're getting, like the H Express line around the Anvil corridor. We gotta make sure that there's house, um, ownership classes for those folks so that they're not displaced. I also think with the $10 million that we're getting from the feds, we should look into an entrepreneurship program for students to actually partner with Metro on a, on a transit program for our elders, because I too have a mom who uses it with a van, so it's important.
So I think we need to start with sidewalks. You can't even walk in some of these areas in Burian because we don't have sidewalks. Uh, again, it takes revenue, so the light rail would be something that I would push heavily for, because the light rail will bring economic value to Burian.
I enjoy this question a lot, as someone who works in downtown Seattle, um, whose kiddos go to church in Bellevue. It isn't just about us going from Burian to Seattle or Seattle to Burian, it's Burian throughout the region. So it's important for us to think about this, again, from a regional point of view, of what do we need to get our working families to their jobs, uh, people to their places of worship, kids to the schools that they have chosen to go to, and to make sure that they can use those safely. So I was in full support of our Rapid Ride H Line that's gonna be going up and down Anvil Boulevard here. That was partnering with King County and saying, yes, we do want you to invest in Burian, and part of that included sidewalks, because I do agree with what John said. We have to talk about sidewalks as well. When we moved to Burian in 2015, my family and I, we were in Boulevard Park, and they are next to no sidewalks, not just on our, our side streets, but in the busy streets as well. So if I wanted to like take my kids to the park, it means walking along the side of the street and having four little ducks in a row behind me to keep them safe. That is unsustainable. Thank you.
We're actually gonna take a really quick pause. You can hear it, and open these windows to people. All right, so the next category is business and economic development. Uh, they're definitely requesting candidates to please stand when they're speaking, so the folks in the back can see you. All right. Are you ready? So what kind of funding should Burian devote to the arts?
Oh, yes, I love that question. Um, I think that arts should be incorporated, I mean, my favorite arts and also what I think we should be doing is arts incorporated into the spaces where they are built. So a park that has been amped up theater where theater performances can take place. Um, it's, if you're using arts funds, but you're also using arts funds simultaneously to do that. And similarly, uh, as, as we build our many public spaces, if you go on the Knights Memorial Drive where there's the stars commemorating the, um, the veterans on the sidewalk. Um, I think a lot of the art should be, it should be integral to what we're doing, the covers on the electrical boxes that you see on the streets. Um, art needs to be something that's part of our lives, not an additional thing that you have to go somewhere to see, but somewhere to see what you're outside, when you're in your community, when you're going to the places that you go to get the services that you need. So I think that...
Part of my saying, arts, not prison. We need programs for our children to be able to accelerate in drawing and singing. Just yesterday, I was invited to an event of a young Latino farm worker who is now seeing classical music companies, he has started here.
classical music movies, he is starting here locally, but in Washington International. That's what it's all about, about making sure that our children are able to live their dreams. We have the ability to make sure that we have the next singer, the next artist, the next dancer. And so it starts really at a local level. It takes us all to be able to develop these programs, to making sure that our children don't end up either in prison, dead on the streets, overdosed with drugs. Those are the things that are really impacting our community. Just this last year, we admittedly lost a life to the pentile. Another young lady ended up paying herself because what happened is that we're coming out of pandemic and so mental health is a big issue. So if we don't have programs, specifically arts, to making sure that we can expand people's ability to grow as human and to be able to interact with others.
Thank you. So I agree with what Jimmy said actually about the youth programs because I think art impacts a lot of areas. I kind of did some of them, but art, you know, we want our youth to learn about art, to pursue art, it helps them. It also impacts our trade, our mobility, you know, we want our city designed in a way that we have public art, like Sarah said, the art on the electrical boxes, even public safety, you know, good lighting, you know, and the good public art displays that make our city more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly, more people that are out there, the harder it is to get away from committing a crime. So I really wish we would actually focus more on art and appreciate art because I think it ties into solving a lot of the other issues we face.
Yes, we definitely have to improve in creative economy aspect to arts. We have to invest in arts. We have to do whatever we can to bring back theater. That was a huge economic driver for us. And if we can do something at the new location of the annex that will also be able to highlight the arts, our art and culture here, it's going to be, it's a must, we have to. That's actually a really key asset that we can use to do that. Another, the city's done work on the creative district that's going on right now, but we have a lot of local artists that have not been working for the last eighteen months. Currently, there's pop up Block Party Boulevard Park. We need those type of investments in community, in all communities where we have a field festival coming up, there's going to be four bands, and all these people spend money here and contribute here. So we really have to invest into the arts district and into our...
When the Buryan Actors Theater got torn down, that was a tragedy when the annex went down. We needed two hundred feet, a two hundred seat theater, much like the one over on Dash on Island. And it can be done, and I know as a business person that I believe that I can organize and get the funding for that theater. That would be a multi-use theater for the arts, two hundred fifty-seat theater in Buryan. Thank you.
I think there are three ways we can address arts in Buryan, especially if it relates to economic development. The first one Hugo touched on really well, which is making sure we are bringing arts to all quarters of Buryan, so decentralizing it from just the downtown core, having more things on our Boulevard Park or our Down and Anvil, over in Seashore, wherever it is that we have our community, we need to be bringing the arts to them and not demanding that they come to certain smaller areas of the city to receive that type of benefit of the thing. Second is partnering with our schools and seeing what can we do with youth programs that are investing arts in our schools. We can align ourselves with the Best Starts for Kids funding that comes from King County as well as the High Line School District and find ways to increase youth engagement in arts, which will also, as we talked about earlier, have an impact on public safety. And I wish I remembered the third one right now because I was really excited about it and maybe I'll tell you more about it on Facebook. But I think it is really important for us to make sure, oh, that they're also culturally appropriate and inclusive. We're not just focused on one community's form of artwork, that we learn to see the beauty in all of our cultures and make sure we have art represented.
Talking about art, that is a big thing. There's no point of doing art for the youth if they don't have a place to post because they want to be recognized. So we are going to have like art, you know, and we're going to encourage our youth to get involved in more art. We have to also provide them with a place where they can focus, where they can show what they can do so they can be recognized and they can feel better about themselves. And that goes for everybody. We have a lot of artists in Buryan. I hate the theater going away, but I went the other day to the tianguis and the tianguis was showing a lot of art from different people that they were doing handmade and I thought it was really cool. I've never seen it in Buryan before and I hope I can see it more. I can, I hope I can see more in the world. And they've been allowed to paint those all over Buryan, same when they've been doing electrical boxes.
Thank you all so much for your answers. We are going to move on to housing. What is your opinion about propositions that raise property taxes?
Well, I'm a one that doesn't like to pay taxes because I pay quite a bit of them as a business owner. But at the same time, I also understand that there's some needs in our community. And so we're a community, these streets don't have labels on them, it's our streets. And so without the taxes, we cannot have our lights on, we cannot build sidewalks, we cannot have the things we need that are vital to our communities. So taxes, I mean, nobody wants to pay taxes, but I think that we're, I'm an individual that I don't pay taxes as long as there's a plan for me. How do we eradicate some of the things that we see right now? For instance, there's a youth center that's opened up on Anvil, the penal citizen center there, that I know that's going to have a program for eighteen computers, eighteen children that are able to learn how to code. I also know that there'll be a facility where people can congregate, children can congregate with their parents, and there's mental health services there. So to me, that's where I want to invest my money. And so I want to make sure that programs like that, Alabamianos or the Youth Futures, people are doing great work for our children.
Property taxes are very regressive taxes. It's a tax that owes more, a lot more in proportion to their income. And you know, we have a lot of people in Buryan like homelessness is an issue that I think that might be the next basket, but some people, they can't even afford to get into a home. And having rising property taxes doesn't make that initial hurdle any easier. Anytime we talk about taxes, we only have so many options. We only need to work with our state legislative delegation as a city to look at more progressive ways of generating revenue. And that's a thing that's important to me, you know, because I believe housing actually, when we talk about homelessness, when we talk about mental health issues, drug issues, I really want housing to be an option for everybody and I want it to be realistic before the law.
Taxes. Oh, man. Unfortunately, the city taxes is the main way the city gets revenue, so I don't like them as much as anybody else, especially for our elders who are sometimes stuck with not growing income and their taxes keep going up. I keep hearing about the challenges my parents themselves have had with property taxes. I think we need to focus on maybe the sales tax, not so much the property tax. Sales tax makes up almost half of our revenues. If we are able to become an entrepreneurship-driven city and have more small businesses in other parts outside of the core, that sales tax revenue will supplement what is being done to our property taxes so that we don't have to depend so much on property taxes, especially as we're aging. I want to make sure that our aging elders here in Buryan have, they get the choice of to age in place and not have to sell property because they can't afford the property taxes. But I definitely agree with Shay for all the regressive tax. We have to work with our state and county leaders on that regressive tax because...
Okay, if you have a budget and you can't do what's in the budget, then what are you going to do? You're either going to raise taxes or you're going to figure out a way to generate revenue. Take a look at CTAP, take a look at Tung Lulu, take a look at Duwans. They've got hotels and motels that are causing them to swim in available funds. So the answer isn't just keep taxing and taxing. A lot of people can't afford these taxes and are being forced to sell their homes. That's not the answer. The answer is to generate more revenue and have a vision.
You know, I agree with the fact that we do have a very regressive tax structure right now as a city. Our revenue can only help from so many places. That's why it's important that we work with other cities and bring these issues forward as a collective voice instead of one of, instead of Buryan saying, we're tired of having to increase property taxes. It's harming our community, our citizens, our community members in Buryan and South King County more than it is necessarily focusing maybe Bellevue or Redmond or Shoreline. Instead of doing it by one by one, we need to be talking to other communities in South King County and raising a collective voice and talking to our state legislators that way, to our federal legislators that way and saying we need more progressive tax structure. That is something that we can do as city council members in Buryan, something I have been advocating for when we meet with our state delegation, is using the platform that we have been elected to do and to tell and to hold our elected leaders more accountable, that you will pass a more progressive tax structure so that our communities are stuck no longer overburdened by taxes.
Poor property taxes, nobody likes that. We don't like that because we don't know where that money really is going. Like EB said, you know, if we know it's going to be needed for this specific thing, we may be more willing to do it. However, not everybody can do it, especially the elderly, you know, they, they earn a fixed income, they cannot afford another increase of taxes. So as John said, we have to be more creative, we have to find another way to generate money, you know, so that way we don't people on increasing the property taxes and forcing the people out of their house because they're unable to pay taxes. I don't think property taxes is the answer to our economic situation. I think we can find a way to generate that money instead of just shooting everybody with their houses, you know, and especially not taking into consideration that there is fixed income and they can't afford it.
This is something that comes up as I'm canvassing all throughout Buryan, most of the people who have lived here for many years and have been priced out of their housing because of property taxes. And it's really difficult because in a city, you're relying on most, some of the most regressive taxes possible to do things that absolutely have to happen in the city. And there's something everybody here can do, which is advocating for more regressive taxes in Buryan, or in Washington State. We have one of the most regressive tax structures in the country and that is holding back a lot of things that could happen. Until then, I think that the cities do need to look at every revenue source, what are the places taxes can come from, but they also need to look at, is there a senior citizen who is facing the risk of losing everything from this? Is there raised the outrage and to keep that from happening because that is not the intended consequence and that doesn't have to wait for anything to start with.
Thank you all so much for your answers. The next category is homelessness. ¿Qué medidas tomarán para apoyar a los homeless? ¿Cómo ayudarán a los que experimentan homelessness?
So I've been waiting for this question because I volunteer transform Buryan three times a week. I interact with our homeless community a lot, so this is a personal issue for me. I know these people. You know, a couple of things. First of all, it goes back to housing. We need to get people housed. I believe in housing first. Once people have some level of stability, they can address if they have mental health issues, if they have drug issues. It also ties back to public safety. You know, a lot of people don't think about this, but there's an overlap between public safety and homelessness. Our unhoused people living on the street are at risk for crime, you know, they can't go open them on their door at night. So, yeah, I think online in addition to zoning change is a bit easier to get housing, but also just while people are homeless, being able to provide them services. And if you have a call, an 911 call where there's no crime being committed, I love what the council actually did just recently of inviting a caseworker and a mental health professional that can go and respond to these nuisance calls where anyone's committing a crime.
I'm going to interrupt really quick. We have another request, so please hold the mic up so we can read all better.
Thank you. Definitely want to make sure we work hard towards this, but it's not going to be something the city can do on its own. We have to continue to work with county, state, the programs like LEED. I actually, on my county job, I launched a LEED program in West Center and I want to make sure that it gets expanded on. And Buryan's had some success here in Buryan, and LEED programs, the law enforcement, assisted diversion, to make sure that we take the stress away from our sheriff's department and police department, but also jobs. I also launched the job program in my job at the county that we work, we partner with and hire folks that are experiencing homelessness. There's a crew of about five that do littering and cleanup. I want to make sure we do something similar here in Buryan to make sure we actually get some of the folks that are experiencing homelessness to clean up and keep our parks clean. That in combination with housing, we just have to build more housing units and that includes housing for the zero to thirty AMI folks that are experiencing homelessness.
So when I was in the Marines in nineteen seventy-three, we led to evacuate Sideline and I was involved in one of the most giant homeless projects you've ever witnessed. I was down at Camp Leighton setting up tents. What I'm trying to figure out is what can we do now? So what can we do right today? We've got to make a stakeholders wheel and we've got to get churches and everyone else that's involved and wanting to help the homeless, not just the people suffering from substance abuse, but mobility, there's all kinds of different homeless, right? We've got to put together a plan and make it for this light seven eighteen that was for affordable housing, but for the homeless. Thank you.
You know, oddly enough, we do have something very similar to that stakeholders wheel in Buryan right now. We have our encu medical leadership circle who meets and educates each other and other members of our community on housing options throughout the city, what's working in other cities, what are we missing out on? Maybe with teachers, with students, with labor union workers, with families, with anyone that you can think of, they will meet with and you, that's how we've worked to pass tenant protections in the city of Buryan, was by putting forth community solutions that we came up with together and advocating for. I think it's also beyond time for Buryan to have a day shelter. This is not going to fix homelessness, but it does provide a place for folks to be during the day instead of homaging in our library, where we can then meet with them and talk with them about what services might be available to move them into housing. I'm a big proponent of housing first, that's why I supported the D E S C project, but a day shelter allows us to have access to people and build those relationships that are needed in order to provide homelessness.
Well, I think the situation with the homeless, once again, is that we don't know much about them. We have to do an outreach, we have to find out how they came to be like that. I gave myself experience, I helped one of the homeless person, she was a girl for six years, she was a homeless year in Buryan. I worked with her family, it was six long years to work with the family until she finally, they finally took her back, even though they were fed up with her because of her drug addiction. So we need to find, try to get family reunification so they can feel supported and that way they'll be willing to get the help they need. Now, not everybody needs mental or drug addiction help. Some of them, they only need a place to live. So we need to deal with them and we need to find out exactly what they need so we can help them and try to provide that for them. Thank you.
I've been, for the last eight months, the site manager of isolation and quarantine facility for people who are impacted by homelessness and who also have a positive or pending COVID-19 test result. And what I've seen is that people really stabilize when they have somewhere that they can be, they can close the door, they can have privacy, they can have their own facilities where they can go to the restroom, they know that their things are safe. And I've also seen that in the times when people do leave, they don't leave them and hang out nearby, they go back to where their home is. And I think homelessness is invisible, if people have a home, whether it's indoors or outdoors, it's a community and we need to have our services where the community already is. I also want to say we need cooling and emergency winter and summer shelter immediately. Climate change is real, it's humidated, it impacts people who do not have shelter first and worse.
Yeah, that subject angers some people and moves others, but it shouldn't touch everybody's heart.
everybody's heart. This is the mother, the child of someone. Look, there was a lady who there, you know, she's suffering from mental health, it took somebody else that was unhoused to be able to talk to her and to be able to feed her. You know, these are people. We are the United States of America, we're supposed to have a bar up here of humanity. And so, to me, this is an issue that I think near and dear to my heart, not have all the answers or have all the solution, but I know that together, we can come up with it. But nobody has been able to figure this out. Throughout the whole world, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Texas, Miami, New York, and everybody's trying to come up with a solution. If I have a solution, I'd fill a Nobel Prize, but here's what I want to do, is how do we continue to work with business, with community members, from all different perspectives? Now, again, this is an issue that shouldn't touch your heart, because again, we're talking about human beings. Even our animals have it.
Thank you all for your answers. All right, next category is youth-oriented issues. How do you feel about critical race theory being in schools?
Just kidding, just kidding, governor, is it me? As a society, we can't become better if we don't learn from our past, and critical race theory reflects on that for us, so I think it's important that we know that, that we know our past. Me growing up here as an immigrant, I didn't learn much about my own history, there were no ethnic studies, there's not a lot of, and that impacts yourself, or that impacts whether you reach out to gangs and other things, because those other groups give you that sense of you belong. So, I think it's important that we recognize that if we do not learn from our past, we will make the same mistakes in the future, and that's, the key answer is a way to do that, to address, to learn from our past.
So, I'm sixty-five years old, and everything I learned in grade school and high school is wacko, right? I'm a white guy, experiencing white privilege, every day I face it, and for the people that are of color in this country, we got a long ways to go. I don't know enough about this theory thing, but I do know that all we were taught was not correct.
As the mother of four children, three of whom are in the Highline School District, one of whom is sitting back there getting fanned off by her father because it's so flattering, thank you, Jason. I could not be more supportive of critical race theory in our schools, teaching the histories that we did not learn about as adults, that we are now responsible as parents to teach our children, but we may not know the full stories of. So, it's important that this curriculum is not only taught to our students, but it's led by the communities who experienced the harm or experienced the harm and continue to, that are being discussed. So, it's not just, it's about who writes the curriculum as well. It's not us saying, "We want you to learn about what slavery was like," only from my point of view. No, it's about making sure that we are teaching things that are accurate historically and that are also bringing relevance to how it impacts us today. It's making that connection, helping our students to see the connection between the past and the present, and what they need to do to help change it as well.
Well, the little bit that I can learn about is here, you know, is like he said, you know, it's not something that is being done by the people that lived, lived, you know, it's been, the curriculum is not coming necessarily from the perspective of me as a Mexican or someone else, you know, it's coming from maybe a joint team, but we're going to end up doing the same mistake because we're not really taking into consideration the people that really have to live through that. So, if we are going to do this, it has to be a comprehensive education, you know, where everybody can get it in school, but get it from the people that really have to live through it, the Native Americans, the maybe the Mexicans, maybe the Salvadorians, maybe the Europeans, you know, but coming from their point of view, and bring examples and give the identity to the kids.
Understanding that history really happened is powerful, it's painful, and it's ultimately empowering. And I think it's important that history acknowledged that a group of people in this country used a social construct of race to enslave and colonize other groups of people. That's part of the history of the country, and it didn't just disappear at some point. There wasn't a moment when that stopped being the case. There are tendrils that are still in place, and that needs to be changed.
Well, the son of immigrants from Guatemala who lived in communism, capitalism, and socialism all at the same time, were displaced in their country, I believe it's important that children know their history. You know, I was growing up, I knew I had come to thirteen colonies from Europe, I knew that we came down from the south, so I asked my teacher, "Teacher, what was my family doing?" She could answer. So, we're starting here in Buryan, look how beautiful that is. We have the Talent Cultural Center here, we just opened up the Latin Youth Center, we got the Latino Civic Center, I hope to see African American Civic Center, I hope to see Asian American Civic Center, because look, we cannot grow unless we know from each other. I have the definition of the American flag, when American, I swore on the Constitution of the United States, so we are redefining our flag today, not yesterday, and today is by making sure our children are educated, that we're all Americans, and we want this economy to work for all of us together. Thank you.
The purpose for our school system is to educate our youth. You learn best when you're exposed to different ideas and you evaluate them before your own opinions. That's called critical thinking, critical, you know? I mean, I absolutely support exposing youth and just everyone else to a wide variety of perspectives. You know, if you're here tonight, you've been exposed to seven different perspectives, and that's going to help you learn and help you make an informed decision as a voter. It's that same principle, and just let's translate it to the schools. So, I, I'm supporting.
Thank you all so much for your answers. We are moving on to the last category of the evening. How will you address these issues?
Well, I don't want to keep sounding like I'm repeating myself, but infrastructure is something that I've spent my whole life doing, this is on, I'm an inventor, I built pile driving machines. It all starts with, somebody's got to write a check, well, where can you get the money? That's really what I'm trying to make, we all want to improve our infrastructure, from sidewalks to even it, but we can't do it until we get somebody in the city council with some business skills and a record of generating money. Thank you.
You know, it's really interesting, I'm not sure many people know this, but our public works department has been operating out of storage units, the long metal storage units that you would see maybe, or shipping containers that you would see at the Port of Seattle, for the past few years, since we lost a building for them to work out of. So, I think the first thing that we do to address infrastructure improvements is to make sure that we get some public works and maintenance facility that will work for them to house their machines, to make sure the snowplows are out of the rain and out of rusting conditions throughout the year. And we are already working on this, we've got a partnership going with the Highline School District down here, the Skills Center, actually, right now, we're looking for the third kind of leg in funding, now transit breakthroughs, now we're reaching out to King County, to the state, to the federal partners, making sure that we get more of that funding in. We've already got over seven and a half million dollars set aside for this project, so it's a matter of making sure we find that last missing piece. That's something I've been advocating for for the last three years, it's something that during our council retreat, we all said was a priority for us on council as well.
What can I say about this? There's so many things that need to be changed in Buryan, and it is hard to decide which one is the most important, but it's all packed down to money. We do need to find a way to bring more money into the town, so we can do all the changes that we want to do. We want to have the after-school programs for the children, but who's going to pay for it? We really need it so the parents can have a piece of mind when the kids are after school, you know, and they're still working, you know? But how can we manage that? How can we manage new sidewalks? How can we pay for a new transportation? It's all about money. We don't need people that have experience or making money in order to make a better plan along with the city. I cannot tell you where to get money, you know, because I don't really know. All I know is that if we all work together, we're going to find that. Thank you.
When, canvassing, I'm really going to miss canvassing and knocking on doors and meeting people at all the neighborhoods, because they're telling what the infrastructure issues are that we're facing, and I think it's an important part of solving infrastructure problems is knowing what different neighborhoods and different communities think are the priorities. Is it the summer line here? Is it cars driving too fast because the West Seattle Bridge is closed and people are taking this shortcut and going real fast through your neighborhood? Is it a small bridge that's been washed out? There's, knowing what your infrastructure kind of problems are is going to help prioritize which ones to solve first and how to do it. There may be partnerships where there's grants that community members can do for part of them, there may be some impact fees when a new business comes in and can pay for part of the sidewalks and part of the infrastructure leading up to that facility. So, there's, it's really, it's not a one-size-fits-all answer.
Well, we've just come out of the pandemic, because we know about ten, ten point eight million dollars will be coming into Buryan, this is a chance for us to work on our infrastructure. We have major infrastructure problems here in the city of Buryan, we have people still on septic tanks, we got stormwater where we have places that are flooding in Buryan, we have sidewalks that haven't been upgraded, we have our streets here that need to be replaced with new laptops, so we've got a major problem in our community. Here's the thing, I'm so happy that we're going to have this infrastructure money coming into our community because we need jobs, so we create jobs, good paying jobs, and we create an economic, a good economic system for the city of Buryan, people will go to work, people will invest money back into our communities, we'll be able to remodel our homes. So, the infrastructure dollars, this is opportunity, ten point eight million dollars that we're going to need your voices, your views, your perspective to make sure that we spend it wisely as a one-time investment. Thank you.
So, first of all, I absolutely agree with Crystal, that a public works maintenance facility is a priority that will let us leverage our existing assets more effectively to address our infrastructure problems. I also agree with what Sarah said about grants. I think the thing we need to realize, so to get a grant, you need to have a project that's compelling to whoever's writing the grant, whether it's a state or federal government. You know, so like the inch line is a great example, because we've been working with Metro on that, we've got some improvements to our traffic signals on that corridor, but it's, I think, you know, I talked to Robert, there's some taxes and all limited objects we have in the city, we need to seek out partners. And so, that's important to me, we need to identify what other government agencies are out there, what they might be interested in partnering on, and how we can make a benefit
We need to invest in broadband that the city manages, it so it has its own utility service, something that brings investment into our city. We have to create more revenue, like someone candidate said, we can't do that without creating more businesses that bring in sales tax revenue so that we don't depend on property tax revenue. I'd like to take some of the funds that we're getting from VEST to create or evolve any flex fund line that we can use to finance and support entrepreneurship around the city that grows our businesses to all areas of the city, and then it grows the revenue so that we're spending more than three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars on public works for the year twenty twenty-one. That's just not enough. I think the investment at the facility is going to be the key launching path for it, that we have to create more revenues, and small business sales tax is going to be one of the ways to do it, and of course, working with VEST to get grants. Like you said, I think they have three hundred and fifty acres of parks, if we invested those parks, that will bring in revenues as well.
You're doing so well that we're going to have time for a little question. This is going to be public safety.
So, we're reviewing category public safety. You support Buryan continuing to be a sanctuary city?
When I got on city council in twenty seventeen, we had just passed our welcoming ordinance in Buryan, it was ordinance six fifty-one, if I remember correctly. And so, the sanctuary city is not an actual legal term, but the spirit of it is there. I support us continuing that moving forward. So, what that means is we're directing our King County Sheriff's Office, our Buryan Police Department, our city staff to not ask about immigration status when someone comes to City Hall for help. When someone is pulled over by a police officer, they are not to inquire after someone's status in our country, whether they are here documented or undocumented. More than that, I think we should be advocating to our neighboring cities to adopt similar protections as well, because as we know, our community members do not all live and/or just work in Buryan, they extend outside of our city boundaries, and we are doing a disservice to our communities if we only focus on what our borders are without advocating for other cities to step up as well, so that's where I stand.
The question is if I support, of course I support that. I support that because that has nothing to do with the city. When a police stops someone, they should not be asking whether they have papers or not, they should not be asking about their immigration status. And we should not be wasting the money that we have for safety or, you know, for other things in sending these people to immigration offices. I think we are doing, by doing that, we will be doing a bad use of our funds. We have so many needs in Buryan that we can invest that money rather than using it on sending people back to immigration. I think we can use it on getting more jobs here in Buryan, creating more jobs and grow as a bigger city with more resources for the community. Thank you.
I believe that we should continue with this status, yes. This is the issue that got me involved in Buryan as a city, and I'm so grateful to have done that and gone to know so many other Buryan issues over the years. I do not believe that public safety will be increased by city employees asking people their immigration status or anything.
Eleven million undocumented workers in this country, it's time for Congress to do their job, to make sure that we fix this broken immigration system. A mother, or a father, or a child should never be afraid of calling the police. This is, when we talk about police before, this is part of it. This is part of how do we police our community? Look, this doesn't say that we're not going to go after violent criminals, this says that a woman or the child who's being abused, or a child is being neglected, that can pick up the phone, they know that they're not going to have to deal with immigration. So, I'm a supporter of this policy, I'll continue to support it, and I'm also a supporter of making sure that we fix this immigration problem in this country. You know, these are people that are working in this country, been here for more than twenty, thirty years, and we haven't been able to get it done in Congress, so I hope Congress makes that fix for us, and this will be a subject that we won't have to touch. But until that day comes, I continue to support being a sanctuary city. Thank you.
So, I noticed a bit of a pattern, because in twenty seventeen, we had people in Buryan saying they weren't comfortable going to the police because they were worried that their immigration status might come up. Then last year, we had people in Town Square running for Black Lives Matter that said they were uncomfortable with police. You know, police are supposed to be public servants, just like all of us up here are ceding to be, and the fact that someone would be uncomfortable reporting the crime to them... And the fact that someone would be uncomfortable reporting the crime to them is astounding to me. What I propose is creating a public safety advisory committee where you would have people of color, you would have unhoused residents, you would have anyone, you know, business owners, just different segments of the community that have different experiences with police. And that committee could report to the council ways to improve policing in Burian. You know, I believe in public safety, but I believe in public safety where everyone in Burian is safe and everyone feels safe and we're in a good community.
As did all the immigrant here at the panel, I can say that I would not be here to work for the efforts to protect the sanctuary city. Ordinance, it's the reason why I'm in front of you. I've been here for 30 years and that reason for it mainly is because Burian has always been a welcoming, accepting city. And when I first saw glimpses of hate and attacks four or five years ago, that's when I decided to get involved. I've done a lot of supporting our businesses that got raided by ICE. I went and I did a meter watch with Sarah and Crystal to protect when families were being attacked at schools and being separated. It's very important to me because we're all invested in Burian as residents and we're all going to contribute back to Burian. And if we're not welcome here, my brother, who's now a teacher, Hazel Val would not be here. My other brother, who's now the director at the Highline School Board would not be here. And I, an economic development manager, serving small businesses one on one, would not be here. So that's a yes.
So if you want to report a crime, what business is it? The police officer needs to know what type of your phone, whether you're immigrant. Come on, this is just a silly question. This shouldn't even need happen, right? So of course, we don't want that because we want people to be able to report a crime without becoming the crime, right? So what are we going to do about it? We pass that and then what we do is we look at this contract that we outsourced to the police department and go through it. It hasn't been updated since 2002. There are expenses in there that all of us are being charged that we probably don't need. We need to focus on 1.911 of this contract, which involves calls for service. Thank you.
All right, y'all. Thank you so much for your answer. We're going to close out with a question on homelessness and then you'll get a remaining each to give your closing remarks. What do you think is Burian's role in addressing the regional homelessness crisis?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
What do you think is Burian's role in addressing the regional homelessness crisis?
Well, I think Burian, as any other city around us, has the duty to try and help those people. We should show some compassion for them, but we have to do it the smart way. We have to reach out to them. We have to know again where they're coming from, what exactly are their needs, you know? So in order to give them a place to be. Now, most of, some of those homeless are homeless because they can't find any affordable housing. So we need to build more housing that is actually affordable. I know families that are being displaced, they actually live on the streets, the entire family. I used to take, my daycare, I used to get two kids from a family that they were homeless. And they used to sleep at night on my daycare and then during the day go to school and they go with their parents because they were homeless, because they couldn't afford to have a place to live. We need to work on that too, if we want to help.
Homeless, like so many things, it's both hyper local and it's regional and national at the same time. People that lose housing or become homeless still have, as I said before, a place that they come home, a community, a place that they came from, a place that they want to be. And saying that, well, put shelter somewhere else makes it harder for that person to accept the opportunity to have a shelter. It's not a place that is welcoming. It's living among strangers in a place that doesn't have a sense of belonging. And so I think that solutions need to be local, but they need to be coordinated regionally because this is a regional problem. People are displaced because of regional economic issues, because of the cost of housing going out so that people can afford housing because of lack of mental health resources and lack of substance use resources here.
So the word homeless and our unhoused people, we really need to break that down. Is it youth that have no home? Is it somebody suffering from mental health that has no home? Is it our military veterans who are coming here after fighting a war that are dealing with PTSD? Who are we really talking about? Because, you know, I think what happens is we try to admit those career criminal individuals find themselves unhoused as everybody being like that. You know, I just had a conversation with two women who both of them have been victims of rape. The reason they like coming to Burian is because they feel safe. People feel secure. So we are not only dealing with our own issues locally, but we're leaders. We set up a lead program. We set up programs, if they don't work, let's change them out. We just passed another ordinance here at the city council recently where we're going to have a mental health specialist with, you know, somebody from the fire department with police officers. So we need a multi-faceted approach to this because it's just not simple.
So one of the things with the D E S C, one of the arguments I heard was they were concerned people were from outside of Burian who would come to Burian to receive services. And it strikes me as odd given how many people from Burian we have sent other places because that's where the services can be provided. To me, if you're in Burian, you're one of ours, I want us to take care of you. And that's going to be a community effort. I mean, we've got transform Burian, we've got the severe weather shelter, we've got cooling shelters. They're absolutely just, we need to get more resources in our community. And anyone in Burian, as far as I'm concerned, if you're in Burian, you're homeless, you're one of ours, let's try to take care of each other. Love your neighbor.
We have to continue to be proactive as a city and it's, all cities have to do it. We're a very small city, 50,000, a little over 50,000, 10 square miles. We're going to do our best. The house, the homeless situation is mostly driven by lack of housing. So we have to be very aggressive about making sure that we bring in more housing, multifamily housing, as much ADU housing as we can, but also address that the transit and the services for it is there. As long as we continue to provide and take care of our own, like Charles said, every city has to do that. It can't just be on us, but we have to be proactive. And I think we're taking the right places with the Affordable Demonstration Project. We have two major developments in the works with the Connect Development, Habitat for Humanity. So we're making good progress and that's going to be how we address it. And every single city has to do the same thing, not just Burian.
So the question was, well, how do we attack regionally and not just Burian? And for those who have followed me with the D E S C part in it, I am not against the D E S C. In fact, I'm in favor of the D E S C. I'd like to see it located in a place where we could also have room for additional services, mainly mental health, because a lot of the safety issues that we're having is not dealing with someone who may be taking some drugs or alcohol, but people who are serious mental health, screaming at you, you know, you can talk to them. We really need those services. And I think that we ought to figure out a way to work with the D E S C to get in those spaces where we can have room to provide more of those types of services. Thank you.
I've been very hopeful about this as someone who was homeless myself as an eight year old in Aberdeen, Washington. I know what it's like to have to sleep in parking lots or on friends' couches and trying to figure out where we're going to be next. It is not a situation that lends itself to being mentally capable for looking for work, for being able to show up in our schools, ready to learn and ready to grow and develop. What we need to do is work regionally in Burian. We've tried going it our own. That's how Burian was founded in 1993. Part of it was on the premise of accepting no more affordable housing from King County. Where it has gotten us is where we are at now, where people are now blocking up the idea of bringing in permanent supportive housing to our city because they don't want people from outside of Burian here. The D E S C program is one such option where with permanent supportive housing, there are mental health services attached, there are substance use services attached, there's job services, education services, all of the same building. That's fantastic, but that's not the only thing that we should be doing. We joined the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners over the last few years with South King County Cities Banding Together. Thank you.
All right, y'all. Thank you so much for your answers. We are going to allow each of you one minute to provide your closing remarks. Just to fix it up a little bit, we're going to start on the other end, so who will pick us up?
My check. I'm very, very humbled and thankful to be here. Thank you for your time this evening to get to know all of us. As the only Burian City Council position one candidate here present, I know that I am the most qualified candidate for to serve Burian. I've been serving in a planning commission for the last three plus years. I've been serving on your business commission. I knew that as a immigrant and candidate of color, I would have to be overqualified to earn people's votes, but I am. My day job is working one on one with business owners to apply for capital, for grants. I've been doing that for 20 years. I grew up in a small business. Small business means more to me than anybody else almost. I would not be here in this country if it weren't for a small business. And I am taking that passion to steward Burian forward for the next two years and as the most qualified candidate for your position one, I hope to earn your vote. Thank you so much.
Again, I'm Charles Schaefer, running for Burian position three. I'm a lifetime Burian resident, 32 years. Went to Highline Public Schools, went to the UDA by an account. I've already mentioned I volunteer at Transform Burian and at this Good Mother Shelter. I'm also a volunteer for Burian Wits and a Hydro Watch. I serve as a treasurer, ACU Burian People Power. Just, you know, whenever anything needs to be done, there I am. I've been showing up in the community for years. You can go look at all the council meetings, you can hear my testimony. You can go to my website, bookcharles.info, find out more about me. And bottom line is, I think council needs to get things done. That's why I'm running is the council majority has delayed the vote on the D E S C for two months before they approved it. I think delays don't help anybody. I support the city trying new things, trying different things. I might not always agree with my fellow council members, but the bottom line is we need to get things done.
Good afternoon, good evening again. Thank you all for sticking the time here with us. Look, I'm tired of the locals in our communities. It's time for us to come together from this pandemic. It's time for us to come together and figure out what we're going to do with a mental health crisis on our hands. What are we going to do with the unhoused people? What are we going to do with the infrastructure laws? See, look, I've been doing the work. I'm out with communities, Asian community, African American community, the Latino community. Because you know, we're all one community. Every time we get up in the morning to make sure that we have a roof over our head and that we have money for our children, we all walk on these sidewalks, we all drive on these sidewalks. I just ask our community to come together. Look, I can learn more about my platform at juniorlife.com for those individuals who have your ballots on your table, fill them out, whether it's for me or whether it's for somebody else. Look, this is our democracy, this is America. This is what people have fought for, why people want to come this way. Thank you.
I guess I'll do my introduction as a closing statement. My name is Sarah Moore, I'm running for Burian, City Council Position Number Five. A little bit about me, I've lived in Burian for 19 years and raised a couple of kiddos here. One of them is now 19 and one is, oh my gosh, 31. It was in Burian when I moved there, it was Boulevard Park we were annexed. In COVID years, I worked at Pacific Science Center. Due to COVID, lost this dream job that I had and went to work at a COVID-19 isolation quarantine facility where I really learned a lot about people in a short amount of time. Things that I thought I already knew, but just came home to me. I have volunteered in Burian, I volunteered at a homeless shelter, at the emergency shelter, co-founded ACU Burian People Power. I also volunteer for People for Climate Action. And I do want to remind you that climate change is real and it's who we made and it is impacting us all.
When they asked me if I wanted to run into this position, it never even crossed my mind about being a politician since I'm just a regular citizen. But there was one thing that struck me. I'm in one of those cities that haven't been heard. And I hate that. I hate that my voice has not been heard. And I know a lot of you guys want to be heard. So I'm here. I'm here to hear what you have to say. I can promise you that things are going to be solved your way, but the only thing I can promise is that whatever you guys said that you think is important for Burian, that it needs to be changed, I will bring it up to the table and I will put it in front of everybody and I'm going to ask what can we do about it? And then I will get back to you and I'm going to give you a feedback. Okay, I brought it over, we talked about it, I'm sorry we're not going to go your way. However, at least they already know and something is going to be happening. I hear you. I hope you have your balance and you can give me a chance to be yours.
Well, good evening again. My name is Crystal Marks. I'm running for reelection to position seven on the council. My website is crystal with a K, the number four, burian.com, and I hope you'll check it out as well. I want to be reelected to council because we have just started really working on things in a regional manner. We've just started to see that what happens in Burian does not stay here in Burian, that it leaks out to other cities, not just for bad, but for good as well. When we passed tenant perfections here in the city of Burian, when we passed some safe housing standards, that spread to different cities. I was talking to city council members in Bellevue, in Shoreline, in Redmond, in Portland, in Tacoma, even outside of our own county, and talking about what we all can do together. It is that type of regional thinking that we need in order to advance our city into not just the 21st century, but to a community that really does care for each other and does so in an active manner. As an outward woman, a mother of four young kiddos who live here in Burian, public safety is also important to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm an adventurer, I'm an innovator, and all of you are smart people. We have an issue, and that is that when we make decisions in this town, a lot of people that want to be involved in those decisions do not even hear about it until the decision is made. And therefore, the opportunity for innovation and creativity is spied. I want to change that. And I want to tell you that Burian has a tremendous future. I see a tremendous future for Burian and it's not that far away. I think that some of the business decisions that are made are ridiculous, like the annex, tearing it down for $345,000 bid and then paying that contractor $620,000. Come on, if you broke your garage down and said 10 grand and then they came back and said it's 100, you'd be disappointed. Something's wrong with the business decision making in Burian. And I want to innovate and I want to help. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates that came tonight. I hope the folks out here know each of you a little bit better. And I'd like you, since we have a little time, to mingle with folks and talk with them. Thank you all for being here.